Board of County Commissioners. Jill Jolker is running point today as Sarah is not with us. She's out this week and today we're going to have a work session on the Integrated Crisis Team Expansion and Mobile Response Pilot. Jill, do you have anything for us before we start?
Yep, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Just as a reminder to the public, this is for informational purposes only. We do not take public comment at our work sessions and there are no items that we'll be voting on. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob Tryansky, I think, who's going to start us off on our work session. Bob?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, and good afternoon, everyone. We are real excited to be here and we appreciate the opportunity, as always, to kind of share an update and also to preview some aspirations and planning that has been going on by the various members of our Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition in trying to expand and enhance our crisis continuum, both in advance of the budget process that's coming up for the county and also as we are continuing to move forward with plans and preparations for the Crisis Center. I wanted to start out by emphasizing that really our purpose today is to kind of have the commissioners have the opportunity to be brought up to date on some of the work that's been done and is being done in delivering services and in improving, you know, the system of care. As we all know, the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition, and this was what I was... sharing your screen, so we'll try it again. There we go. The Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition is an organization of eight organizations, or a coalition of eight organizations, and it's Douglas County, Lawrence County Public Health, the Housing Authority, Burt Nash, LMH Health, Heartland Community, Radec, and DECA. We have been working together for more than three years now. And as everyone knows, the vision for this group is to create an integrated system of behavioral health care that serves the whole person, their whole life, so they can realize their full potential. I apologize to the Commission because I know you've seen this several times, but I just want to make sure that the public and folks that are joining us for the first time have a sense of what this group is and sort of its vision for how we can move forward. The coalition is made up of the CEOs of those eight organizations along with various members of their administrative teams, their chief of operations. It's a group that, like I said, has been meeting for about three years. And it's the collective impact organization that is responsible for stewarding and shepherding the behavioral health plank of the community health plan. And so that strategy that we kind of have articulated as our aspirational goal over the next five years is to build an integrated system of care that moves from crisis and illness as a norm to recovery and prevention as a practice. And as everyone knows, if you've been following this conversation for the last couple of years, what started out as a fairly narrow conversation about adding a facility to our community that would be helpful in diverting people from other facilities such as an emergency department or the jail, that conversation has evolved to take a look at really what we need to do in Douglas County to build an enhanced system of care. That system of care includes several components, if you're looking at the crisis continuum. When a person's in crisis in the community, they should have multiple options to access, you know, the least restrictive, most therapeutically appropriate opportunity to receive the care that they need, whether that is merely by talking to somebody on a crisis line or connecting to an appointment for outpatient services, whether that is people who come to a person in the community through a mobile crisis team, whether that services in a crisis center that helps to divert people away from jail, divert people away from the state hospital or inpatient psychiatric hospitalization. What we want to do today is kind of block this off for the moment because we will come back around to plans for the design of the crisis facility and we want to talk about what we might be able to do to improve these components of the system of care. The components that happened before a crisis and that happened following a crisis and that might allow us to have more appropriate and effective intervention during a crisis. So what our group has kind of been asking ourselves is how do we provide the right care in the right place at the right time? And one of our early efforts, our first efforts, was the development of an integrated crisis team to focus some new interventions and new initiatives specifically on that population that shows up in the emergency department in our community in the midst of a crisis. That's a lot of people in the course of a year. I think it was two years ago, there were like 48, 45,000 people that came to the emergency department at LMH, 4,200 of those came in in the midst of a behavioral crisis. So that's a mental health issue, that's suicide risk, that is addiction or overdose or substance use related emergency, 4,200 visits to the emergency department. It's like two full nights at the lead center in terms of numbers of people. And about 25% of those people are experiencing suicidal ideation or have made a suicide attempt. So it's a significant number of people and everyone in our community who was in that moment has one opportunity and that right now is at the emergency department. So we thought, what would happen if we focused some additional interventions and different approaches to care through a multi-agency interdisciplinary team that would embed behavioral health, crisis clinicians and peer specialists in the emergency department, strive to improve access to community-based and regional substance use disorder, crisis stabilization and outpatient services, support patients with intensive care coordination that need to navigate in the community to make sure that they engage and connect with appropriate services and outpatient treatment opportunities, reduce barriers to care such as transportation and all the hurdles that people face as they're trying to navigate our inadequate healthcare system and our frustrating healthcare system at times, closing those equity gaps that exist. And for people who suffer with a serious mental illness or an addiction issue, if you have a chronic mental health diagnosis, you have by definition an equity challenge, given the way our system rises up not to meet far too many people. And then the last piece was to collect and to share data. What we want to focus on, we believe that we have made some really significant progress in meeting the needs of people in the emergency department. And that work has been done through collaboration with LMH, with Burt Nash, with Heartland Radec and with DECA through a series of interventions. Under the leadership of Derek Hurst, who was hired to be the director of the Integrated Crisis Team. Derek today and Nicole Riles from Burt Nash and Stacy Cooper from Heartland Radec and Sandra Dixon from DECA are going to share some proposals and aspirations for how, between now and when the Crisis Center comes online, we think we could further enhance services and build that system of care to serve people beyond the emergency department. Eric, do you want to talk a little bit? Because Derek convened a work group that the Integrated Crisis Team Steering Committee has spent really several months in kind of looking at these issues, drilling down on the details, identifying the gaps. Eric, do you want to just kind of set the context for sort of the values around the work that lies ahead of us?
I'm sure. So as Bob mentioned, we had a group of folks that got together and we really began talking about the work as it's happening now and where did we see opportunities or where did we see some, you know, frankly, some struggles and things that really needed to adjust the system to better meet the needs of individuals in our community. And so we kind of talked about some of these kind of primary goals or guiding goals for us as we look towards, you know, building to the Crisis Center and beyond. What kind of goals were we looking at that were important for us for the continuum of care? And obviously, you know, for us, first and foremost is always going to be the person-centered perspective in that, you know, never losing sight that we're serving, you know, our friends, families and neighbors in this process and it's important to me in every interaction that we have, that whatever the interaction is, it's at least to the standard of like what I would want for my family. And so that person-centered piece also speaks to, from that patient's perspective, or that person's perspective, what they need or what they're telling me they're needing or what they're indicating they're needing, not so much what the system is currently set up to do for them. And so that whole person perspective is important and understanding that when you talk about substance usage disorders and mental health issues, they're not two completely separate people here. A lot of times those are co-occurring in the same person and they're part of the human experience on a spectrum and it's important that we design, for us, it was important that we designed the crisis continuum of care in a way that met that person from their need perspective and not from a perspective of, you know, if you have a, if you're struggling with SUD, substance usage issues, then you need to go over here to this door or talk to this person. And if you're struggling with depression, you should go over here, right? Like a lot of times those things are intertwined. And so that's important from the person's perspective piece. We also understood that we needed to increase access. A lot of the work that we did, especially in the early years, early year of this was to, you know, overcome a lot of barriers in our emergency department because the emergency department is the door that's open, you know, especially late into the night and those pieces and individuals' crisis, you know, our individual crisis episodes don't, you know, don't have a time schedule. They don't work on a business schedule. And so we really did a lot of focus there, but we also identified that we wanted to focus and expand the access to opportunities for care that were outside of the ED specifically. And so increasing that access, expanding times and locations and really trying to get away from the more restrictive settings that kind of become the default late at night because of, you know, needing more access points. So then we also looked at sustainability from a perspective of whatever we build, we know that has to be both fiscally sustainable, but also too, has to be sustainable for the humans doing the work, the people doing the work. And this is a difficult, and this can be a difficult and tough job to do, working with folks in crisis. A lot of times you're seeing, you know, people on the worst day of their life and doing that day in, day out for several hours a day can really take a toll on someone. So we wanted to make sure that we put in the appropriate supports and pieces and designed it in a way that made that sustainable work so that you had good experienced people that could maintain and continue doing that job and do it in a way that is healthy for them as well. And then also being flexible and adaptable. Again, you know, no one kind of crisis event for an individual fits into, you know, a specific mold. And so our system needs to be designed in a way that is able to respond flexibly to that and adapt to what the situation needs for this individual, which goes back to the person's centerpiece.
What we want to share with you is a vision for what we think are kind of four steps forward. One is to build a workforce and to really start to address some of the limitations that we have at the moment in terms of providing that full 24/7 crisis response coverage and being able to get out in the community. This is going to be an incredible lift for our community to have the workforce that we need to serve in the Crisis Center and to do this work. It requires a lot of people, it requires hard hours, it requires, it requires a real effort on our part to be very intentional and strategic about how we build this workforce. The second piece is we believe it is possible now to expand access to outpatient services, the access team at Burt Nash. When the Crisis Center comes online, we are going to propose 12 hours a day from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night of service during the week and four hours a day on Saturday and Sunday. We believe we can take some steps forward in 2020 and in 2021 to bring on some, a significant addition of access hours that will help to reduce, we hope, the number of people that wind up in the emergency department, to give the Burt Nash team, the addiction counselors, the care coordinators that are involved in this work more time to be able to meet the needs in ways that can keep people in the community. We also are recommending some changes to our strategies in terms of how we integrate peers into the system. And the last piece is we believe we can pilot mobile response. So in the sense of meeting people where they are and meeting them before their crisis escalates to a full-blown emergency, we believe there's opportunities to take those steps forward now. Nicole Riles and Derek and the team at LMH and Burt Nash and Heartland Radec have been talking, you know, very seriously about what those teams should look like and also what an integrated crisis line would look like. Let's talk about each of those components. And the first is to build this workforce. We want to emphasize that what we're aspiring to is to have one team, an inter-agency, multidisciplinary team of crisis specialists. And we integrate expertise into medical needs, substance use needs, mental health needs and addressing suicidality risk regardless of where people show up. I'm going to come back to Derek a little bit so that he can explain kind of the vision for how we would integrate existing staff at Burt Nash, LMH, and then combine efforts with DECA and Heartland Radec and add some additional staffing that really would take us to a much more robust 24/7 type of coverage.
So you'll see from this PowerPoint here, the proposal is really about making sure that we're designed in a way to be as flexible as possible while also supporting the individuals doing the work and increasing that access. And so with that in mind, you know, we looked at the opportunities we had from the staffing level and staffing standpoint of what we currently have, which you'll see on the left side of the chart here. This is what we're currently working with or aspiring to work with. There might be an opening here or there that we're feeling currently, but this is kind of the model now. And the way this model works primarily is the access center is across the street and we're over here at the hospital doing our work in pieces. And though we have, over the last two years, really done a lot of work to integrate and to talk, talk with each other, communicate with each other and made a lot of steps in improving treatment from that standpoint of being able to share the right information and talk about it and identify the right kind of resources for people and set them up with appointments right away. There still were kind of these two separate teams that have sometimes conflicting priorities. Everybody has the same priority of keeping somebody safe, but the steps of how we do that and what that looks like can be conflicting depending on where you're stationed. And so through that kind of discussion as well as the identification, need to be really flexible, you know, we often call Burt Nash to come over and do screens for us and pieces, but it was really kind of like a contractual relationship, you know, to do screens and pieces. That was very helpful for us, but we saw, you know, there's an ability or there's an opportunity here to really grow that. And so in the process of that, we said, you know, what's the idea of having, you know, what would it be like if these folks were able to interchangeably support each other? So instead of just always LMH depending on Burt Nash to come over and support whenever things are getting really busy at the hospital, oftentimes they get busy over there at the access. And they don't have another person they can call to come over and do that work. And that's not really fair, in my opinion, that they put all this effort and energy into coming and helping us and we can't reciprocate that. And so there's some opportunities in this model for us to be able to add a few additional staff to expand their coverage time, but also to allow them to be flexible and float back and forth as needed where the demand occurs. And so that occurs, that's made possible through the ad there of some manager or supervisor hours on both sides and also through the addition of what we call a swing, a swing social worker position that is designed to work during heightened hours. From the data that we've seen, about half of the folks that we see in the ED come into the ED between the hours of 3:00 and 11:00 p.m. And so that's a pretty obvious point for us to say, if we need to add care, we need to add care and access time there and then have the ability to have someone who can respond, you know, either to the access center to help or to the hospital to help as well. And so, you know, overall, the proposal adds about 4.5 FTEs of time to those positions that give you the expanded coverage for the access center. It gives you 24/7 coverage in the ED. There were some gaps, we had about 16 hours a week of gaps of coverage in the ED as well, which we wanted to make sure we were covering, though those are like early morning times and less utilized, there are still, there's still demand there. That's important to make sure we have that expertise when someone needs it, we have it there. So and then that swing position that also flexes back and forth is important too.
So the ability to flex between the locations where people are needed most, the ability to start scheduling people in ways that are conducive to doing crisis work, which is long hours, weekends, being able to backfill when there's a need because there are more people in the emergency room or there are more people in the Crisis Center than anticipated, that sort of flexibility requires more people. And all of the proposals that we put forward here involve bringing people online now that will be part of the operation and the cost of what we're proposing to do. So all we're proposing to do is to bring a fragment of that online now so that we can start to do a better job with people before they come to the Crisis Center. Piece of that is expanding access and that idea of providing the right care in the right place at the right time. Nicole Riles is the Director of Urgent Care at Burt Nash. Nicole leads the access center team along with Aaron Newton, who's the program manager for the access center, and they've done a lot of work, again, in collaboration with LMH, in conversations with our other partners to talk about how we could have a smooth, one door, one front door for people to walk through in the Crisis Center. We're proposing to move the access center into the Crisis Center so there's one place where people go and they can get all of their needs met and triaged and assessed to start this journey. Want to share some of the benefits that are sort of proposed in this expansion of hours? I think you might do that, I'm not sure if you're talking or not.
Yeah. Currently, our access center, so we have a group of crisis clinicians who are extensively trained in the area of crisis support and therapy and interventions. And one of the great dynamic things about the work we do here at Burt Nash is it is outside of that emergency department setting. We can take as much time as we need to work with people and involve families and collateral supports. And most of the people that we help are able to stabilize, get the resources, the follow-up they need and return back to their home or their living situation. So we really try to support that least restrictive outcome as possible. Our limitation comes when 5:00 hits, you know, our building closes. So essentially, those same types of services that we would typically offer during business hours, we're not able to offer after 5:00. Now, we do certainly, as Derek mentioned, we will respond to the emergency department. We will respond to other areas in which we contract with to provide that care. But our hope is that we can extend our hours at Burt Nash and keep allowing people to come here to the center as opposed to having to go into the emergency department. The peak times for our crisis also are mid to late afternoons into the early evening hours as well as Derek mentioned into the late evening hour. So what we're proposing is to see what we can accomplish and hoping that we can divert people from the emergency department from 5:00 p.m., keeping our doors open until 8:00, which would allow us to really do two things. If someone comes in at 4:30 or even now and we're taking, it takes some time to gain the recovery that they need and to get them stabilized. We've had certain situations where we have to eventually have to walk them over to the emergency department to continue that care for a number of reasons. So we would be able to keep people here later into the evening to work toward a resolution of their crisis and work toward that safety planning that they're needing. But we also would be able to take walk-ins after 5:00. So someone who is needing support and it's after 5:00, typically right now we would be closed, but under this proposal, we would have some extended hours so people can come here as opposed to going to the emergency department for that care. When people come here, we still have, we still offer the full scope of outcomes. We have some people who might benefit from a crisis bed facility or some people who might even benefit from inpatient care. But the majority of the people who we're able to have interventions with are able to go home with the support and the follow-up and the care that they need. And I think that is partially directly related to the ability to do that type of care in an environment that is not, you know, as fast-paced and as you might see in an emergency department setting. So that is a big piece of our contribution in being able to help facilitate and segue extended crisis coverage into the crisis facility when it is operational.
So when that facility comes online, the access center and the front door of the Crisis Center will have weekend hours, four hours a day, eight hours over the course of the weekend on Saturday and Sunday. What we're proposing now is to take a step forward and the step forward would be, let's go to 12 hours a day during the week and see what type of progress we can make. We've also had tremendous success, as you know, in engaging people in the next step of SUD treatment, thanks to the work that DECA has done with their Social Detox Project. Again, that project initially focused on intervention in the emergency department, but there are opportunities to engage clients in access to social detox upstairs on the other floors of LMH. DECA is doing some work over at Heartland Clinic. And so as we've gone through the budget process and the preliminary meetings in anticipation of the budget hearings that are coming forward, DECA came forward with an idea to expand the reach of that program and to engage what they would estimate would be an increase of about 40% the number of people who are served in the course of the year and to build on what we've learned with the use of peers. So the next component of this is integrating peers, not just in the emergency department, but really across the system of care. So that's intentionally placing a spirit of hope, mutuality and lived experience at the heart of the system of care. So Sandra's going to share a little bit of a vision for putting a full-time dedicated peer in the emergency department, eight hours a day, 365. And then Stacy is going to talk a little bit about how we're going to propose to rearrange the peer fellows who were exclusively dedicated in the emergency department. We started to expand where we place them, where we assign them. And we think there's opportunity to really build on what we've learned by making peers the heart of the enterprise. So Sandra and Stacy, you want to share some of the vision for what we have? ETOC project and the peer integration?
Yeah, thanks, Bob. Commissioner Jill, good to see you all, it's been a while. To review kind of what we've been doing in the emergency department for two years now, we're in our third year. Our peers are called in by the BHCs or the social workers when there's a patient in the emergency room who has a substance use crisis and has said yes that they are willing to go to social detox. We served last year in 2019, we received 182 referrals, which include some from Heartland Clinic. And over 75% of those people said yes to social detox with our peer, which I think talks what Bob was mentioning about the positive impact peers have in this system, that they can talk from their lived experience to help folks take that first step in recovery. When, as we've been talking about preparation for the Crisis Center and knowing that detox services would be available in that space, the staffing model includes a full-time peer as part of that team. And so we decided to propose, what if we took a step forward now in preparation for the Crisis Center next year and embedded a full-time peer, eight hours a day, 365 days a year in the emergency department to begin working with patients differently in the manner that we hope we are working with them when the Crisis Center opens? One of the conversations Derek and I have had routinely is how do we get more upstream with the patients in the emergency room instead of waiting until they say yes? How might a DECA peer be involved with them from the beginning? And if detox is not... And if detox is not the thing that they want or that they need, how then do we help connect them to Heartland Radac or other partners so they get to the next right place if detox is not their choice? So, Derek and I talked after we created this proposal and decided that, you know, having somebody available in that second shift time period, three to 11, four to 12, which was really their high-volume time, would give us additional access to folks who might not otherwise start that recovery process. We anticipate that having somebody there full-time, 365 days a year, will increase the number of people who go to social detox and it'll allow us to practice as a collaborative team what it might be like when we get to the crisis center. So, Stacy, I'm going to pass this over to you.
Thank you, guys. So, talking a little bit about how we're going to integrate peers into the care coordination program that we have going on. We're really excited to be able to add two peers as a collaborative effort with Burt Nash and fellowship, to be able to join our care coordinators in the community and create some of these warm handoffs between our agencies from a peer mentoring perspective. You know, we talked a little bit about Sandra's role and how she's utilizing those peers within LMH ED. And I really envision an opportunity for us to be able to do some more handoff when it comes to peer to peer. But as those peers collaborate with our care coordinators, we're really hopeful that we can really embed the idea of recovery and hope and some of the values that the peers bring to the table as we're, you know, touching the different lives of care coordination. We, we work with clients on average, you know, three, three months or longer. We really try to, you know, do a warm handoff to the community provider that can stick with them. And we just really envision an opportunity to get some of those things embedded in, you know, with those clients as in regards to recovery and mental health and the peer mentoring support by being able to collaborate and have a, a team approach in conjunction with our care coordination team. So, we're looking at the opportunity for us to hire some peers to join the team sometime in August. And we'll be working on some of the processes as it relates to getting those people connected and seeing clients in the community.
So, then what would change again is the base of peer support would be provided by DECA in the emergency department, eight hours a day, 365. We still envision that there would be peer fellows to supplement those hours that are not covered. But it makes sense to continue to experiment with how to optimally deploy peer support. So, peer fellows will join the care coordination team. Peer fellows are an option to join or to deploy with the piloted mobile response that we're looking at and talking about. There's some issues to talk through there still, but it's an option. And it would allow us, again, to optimize the use of dollars that we, that the commission has invested in, in improving the system. And then continuing to do community-based and virtual peer support initiatives. So, we have peers now who are working at the Housing Authority. We have peers who are working at the library. Because the library's gone offline during COVID, we have peers that are offering support virtually and facilitating smart recovery meetings online. So, we need to push ourselves to think as creatively and intentionally as possible about how to really, again, build that workforce of peer support. When we were in Arizona as a team with the group from Connections, they made it perfectly clear that the key to their success is an integrated team with a nurse, a tech and a peer. And they said over and over again, there is no difference in terms of the collegiality and the role in terms of hierarchy that a peer plays in that, in that, in that system. And, and their peers work 12-hour days. So, to get to a point where we have peer specialists who are willing to do that type of work, put in that type of hours and have that type of impact, this is an opportunity to, to learn, to, to grow and to discover what we're going to need to do to get from where we are to where we want to be. The last piece is piloting mobile response. And that idea is meeting people where they are, helping them to maintain community stability and prevent future crises. So, you know, can we get out and de-escalate so that somebody doesn't need to go to the crisis center? Can we meet people in the community who are frequent utilizers of services who we all know? And because we have relationships that are ongoing with those people, are there ways to bring services to them where they are? So, mobile response is, you know, another tool that our, our friends in Arizona, the Connections consultants have said again and again, this is a critical piece, a critical component. And we don't need a crisis center to bring mobile response online. Nicole has really been leading a lot of the conversation that's been going on in two spaces. One, as a work group of the CJCC, because mobile response in a lot of ways, what we're proposing here, builds on what already exists with the, the Lawrence Police Department Mental Health Team, with that co-responder unit and with the work that the care coordination team is doing from Heartland Radac. So, this work is a collaboration that has involved headquarters in discussions about how we integrate a 24/7 crisis line. It has integrated a conversation with Kevin Joel's and the EMS team and, and dispatch and law enforcement. So, it's a collaborative conversation going on between the CJCC and then this ICT Steering Committee. And we think we're ready to take a step forward, which would be to start to pilot mobile response during the week between those critical hours of three to 11. And then eight hours a day on Friday, Friday through Monday over the course of the weekend. In those hours that we currently don't have coverage and the access center is closed and it's a difficult time to navigate a crisis in our community, what would happen if we piloted mobile response then? What type of results could we get? And how can we get from A to B? Nicole, do you want to share a little bit of insight with just kind of the concept of mobile response? And, and how it's different or how, how it's different than what we're doing with law, law, law enforcement with the co-responder idea? You know, what the, what the benefits or the differences are with a dedicated mental health team?
Sure. Our mobile response is very essential and critical to the crisis continuum. It's probably the, the newest in the sense of something that as the community, we've not implemented in, in one form of another. Because what it entails is you, you do really take the, the scope of services to the person in the community. It typically will consist of a master's level clinician and a person who, like a peer support person, a case manager. We've even talked about other ways to integrate medical and, and other types of supports and collaboration in that response. So, in essence, what it does is that it allows for those, that team, however it's made up, to really go to the person to provide that care and to do that stabilization work in the community. Essential to that is its partnership with a higher acuity of care, such as our co-responder team. So, our co-responder team, which consists of that master's level clinician as well as law enforcement, is also essential to the crisis continuum because they have, there's a level of intensity that involves the need to have law enforcement implemented for safety reasons. But the primary goal is to still provide the mental health care. So, the co-responder goes out with that law enforcement officer to really work on the clinical side of things while the law enforcement officer helps to make sure the, the person is safe and the surrounding areas are safe. What mobile crisis response does is that it really takes away, there, there, there are some cases, like in our co-responder care, that maybe they go out and when we really think about it, it does not require a law enforcement presence. And sometimes the only reason law enforcement is there is because we have absent of a program like mobile crisis response. What mobile crisis response does, it takes away the law enforcement component. It leaves that co-responder, law enforcement component for those really highest-level acuity, safety issues that only law enforcement can help us manage. And it allows us to go out for probably a, a majority of responses that really just need the, the clinical care. They need the clinical group to be there to offer their interventions and to provide the level of support that they need. The beauty of it also is that mobile crisis has that ability to partnership and refer to anyone in the community and collaborate with teams like the co-responder as well as agencies to help people get established in care and to follow up to a certain degree, providing some ongoing care until there's a little more stability in their care plan. So, partnering with other agencies that provide ongoing coordinated care is part of what the, the crisis, the mobile crisis will, will do as well. So, our ability to pilot this, to, to implement this is essential to start now or in the, in the near future to pilot. So, really, we are capable of implementing a full-fledged program by the time, you know, our, our full crisis campus and recovery center is up and running. So, our, our goal right now would be to start to have these discussions about how is this team made up? How will their response be? How will they be called and assigned cases? And, and how will they be able to partner with various agencies to help people get established in care?
Last piece of this, thanks so much Nicole. The last piece of this is to continue to gather and share data and to focus some of our, our data gathering efforts in ways that we haven't to this point. So, one is to continue to identify opportunity, opportunities to address those equity and parity gaps in the system and to, you know, set some real benchmarks and expectations and identify outcomes that our partners will be responsible for benchmarking and how, and helping us to understand whether we're making progress or we're not. This is a really important thing that emerged in our conversation. We've done a lot of work to try to improve the environment in the, in the, in the emergency department. And to do that by putting behavioral health professionals together with medical professionals in a really tough urgent care environment. And so, a lot of the goal of that has been to do what you see in an integrated behavioral health primary care clinic like Heartland, which is when you put those two levels of expertise together, they start to learn from each other. And we have, you know, recently completed sort of a qualitative study of how employees and medical staff and the team at LMH, how their perceptions of people with mental health issues, people with substance abuse issues, people who are in the midst of a, of a suicidal ideation moment in time, having a, a different sense of what's going on there, what the underlying story is, how, how trauma has, you know, how trauma has created circumstances that may have led to, led to this moment. We need to do a better job of assessing the patient's experience from the patient perspective. And that can be challenging to do, but we need to push ourselves to find ways to do it so that we really understand whether people who are in the emergency department or in the crisis center are interacting with the mobile response team. You know, do they, do they feel like they are getting the type of care that you would have with any other healthcare condition? We need to continue to monitor the impact of existing interventions. So, you know, Sandra and the team at DECA have set a pretty high bench in terms of effectiveness. 75% say yes, 75% complete, complete treatment. That's a pretty high bar. Can we meet that additional bar? Can we, can we, can we meet and support, you know, 40% more people in the course, in the course of a year? Those types of, of benchmarks, those types of outcomes, those types of aspirational goals are the things that we need to continue to monitor. Then the last thing that's been really valuable in this, and it's really important, it's even more critically important now, is, you know, there is a tremendous amount of commitment. And there's a commitment, tremendous commitment to bring on more resources. And there's a lot of risk involved in a, a project this bold in terms of what we're trying to do with the system of care, with the recovery campus, with the crisis center. So, by doing this work now, experimentally, in a piloted fashion, it allows us to continue to test those volume and revenue projections for the crisis center. So, we have a sense of, you know, are we really on target for how many people we're going to need to be able to serve? Have we found appropriate ways to close the, the, some of the gap between revenue and expenses of offering these services that are not adequately funded? What can we learn by doing things on a slightly smaller scale than we envision doing when the crisis center opens 18 months from now? So, that is kind of the, that is, that is the perspective. Build the workforce, expand access, integrate peers and, and pilot mobile response. And there's a lot of detail yet to be worked out and dollars to associate specifically to who does what, where and when. We've made a lot of progress on that. But what I wanted to say to you as the commission is when we come through the budget process, what, what we've decided to do is to identify a couple of spaces in the behavioral health project, budget with placeholders. Those placeholders are with like not to exceed amounts that would give us a framework to know that, that the, the sales tax dollars will be available to do this work. But obviously, as we've done with every other project we've done so far, before we were ready to sign a contract, deploy those dollars, make that commitment, we would come back to you, you know, with a very more detailed budget and proposal. But you will see some of that. I mean, I think one of the proposals that's farthest along in a lot of ways is a supplemental proposal from DECA. So, you know, we're recommending that we create capacity in the sales tax there. There's a proposal for a project with the health department to do some of this data sharing work and to build capacity there. So, there are four places in the budget where we will speak to being able to take on these initiatives in ways that would be absorbed in 2022 into the operating expense of the crisis center. We've thrown a lot of information at you. Every time we do something like this, I realize like now just how much work this team has done, how many hours they've put in, how many challenging conversations we've had and also how many moments to, we've had to celebrate in ways because we know that we are doing a better job than we did three and a half years ago in meeting the needs of people who are struggling in our community. We also know that we have a lot of work to do and we want to roll up our sleeves and move forward. What questions do you have for this team?
Thanks Bob. I appreciate it and your whole team. Just really a very thorough, thorough report and lots of for us to think on. I'll, I'll offer out to my fellow commissioners if they have any questions at this time.
Patrick, I do. This is Nancy. I, so, Bob, in terms of the workforce...
Is anybody else losing Nancy?
Yeah, we are.
Whoops. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, maybe I'm having country, country-related wifi issues. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, in terms of developing this workforce or finding the people and finding them, assuming that we're able to pursue this in a timely way, how do you, how do we find these people? Do you do a national search? I mean, how's the recruitment of peers going? Is it all local? Is it regional? Is it national? I guess I'm wondering how we fill these, these really important pieces of the puzzle? Anybody?
Deathening silence of crickets. I'll take a stab while our partners are collecting their thoughts because I'm sure they have a really laser-focused answer. They just need a minute. I think the answer is we need to get started. I mean, we're, we're 18 months away from the projected opening of the door. And I think if you look at some of the pieces of the staffing, for example, how are we going to get a medical director on board? How are we going to get a clinical director, an administrative director? That work is being taken on by the providers in work groups to kind of assemble the job description and really start recruitment. You know, I know that Derek and Nicole and Stacy deal with this issue all the time in terms of trying to find good people and trying to keep good people. Maybe you, the three of you could speak to what you've had success and where you see some opportunity with this type of an approach to tighten, tighten things up or to have more success?
I think from my perspective, the, like, you know, finding...
I think from my perspective, like, you know, finding people can sometimes be a challenging, especially for like these these overnight hours, right? And there's different stages of people's lives where those those hours, you know, are more dual. Like early in my career, I definitely was more of a night owl and did overnight positions and pieces like that. And so you find people in that way. I, you know, I'm less concerned about finding people, though that is really important. I I know that we have good pools of folks out there for a lot of these different types of positions and and the ability to even look nationally, you know, for some of them as well. But my focus and concern was really as we developed this, and that's part of this plan's, you know, goal is to really try to make it sustainable from a from a professional kind of point of view as well. And that I I know that doing this work is challenging and requires a certain amount of support from a supervisory level that really we're needing to build that capacity and add some of those hours, especially in the weekends and other pieces too. And with that, I'm fully confident that, you know, we'll be able to 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 really, once we find the folks, we'll be able to really retain them through that support and that and the flexibility and also even down to the scheduling that we're kind of proposing, the tentative scheduling piece. We've listened to the folks doing the work and saying, what is working and what's not for you? And one of the things, you know, that they're saying is, you know, this, you know, kind of eight hours, five days a week, you know, it's kind of tough. It doesn't like by the time you unwind on a weekend, it's time to come back, right? Like on your your two days break, it's time to come right back into it. You don't really have time to do that self-care as as much as you need to. And so we took that into account in some of the alterations to the scheduling of doing longer hours and less days. And that's, we we've already started testing that, you know, with the BHCCs and the ED and seeing some success with that. And and they're supporting that. The folks doing that work are saying, you know, this is what works better for my like work-life balance and listening to that's important too. So we've done a lot of listening and a lot of planning in this program to to keep the folks that are there. Finding them is is a matter of recruiting them and going out and, you know, interviewing the right folks and having the right questions. And I think all of us have a lot of experience with trying to, you know, trying to find someone who we think is going to be successful in these positions.
Derek, isn't it also true that in consultation with the Connections folks, they've made some sort of concrete suggestions about just kind of how to schedule? People do have enough time off to recover so that, you know, you find people who, you know, are are perfectly comfortable working a twelve-hour urgent crisis shift because they know they're going to have a day or two after they've done those. I mean, it's like it's like being in an emergency room, doctor or ICU nurse in some ways in terms of the challenge. Is that is that true?
No, that's that's very true. They they give us a lot of feedback around different models that they have tried previously. I have some previous experiences too from working at a a full-time kind of, you know, hospital and residential facility that had to do staffing twenty-four-seven too. And a lot of what they're saying makes sense in some ways. You know, suggestions for scheduling where at any given time you have about half your workforce that's available to come in, that flexibility piece that's available to come in in some overtime capacity to help support if you have a a an influx, right? Because because planning for the the influxes in crisis care is really one of the hardest parts, right? Like, we can get folks there and doing the work, but really planning for the days that you 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 only have a couple of folks coming through. And then the next day, when you've got twenty people at your door at one time, it's really difficult to set a system up that that can support that. And so we've definitely got a lot of information and pointers from from our our friends and consultants around that as well.
I do think also recruitment, because of the volume of people that we're talking about, will be something that we'll have to be intentional about. Definitely, you know, there it's a competitive in the sense that, you know, we've gone through well over a year where there was really a shortage of of social workers who were doing this level of work, crisis work, and we saw that across the state. They are, there are still people who want to do this work with all spectrums. But specifically speaking to the therapist level, which is where, you know, I we kind of have a really heavy emphasis on the therapist level of work to be able to help manage and guide the care, that will be a point to make sure when we recruit and when we offer people to come to this facility or to this community to do this work, what is the culture that we're creating? How do we, how are we proactively assuring people that we have a system in place that supports them as an individual, as well as people are very passionate about the care of the of the the people that they're serving? So how are we building the culture that is creating the the environment that people want in in the in today's workforce? In addition to the flexibility and the factors that Derek spoke to, that's why we wanted to implement the the data as we collect about the patient experience, about the provider experience. Because if the patient is not having a great experience, the quality-driven provider who really cares about their work is not going to have a good experience either. So those balancing the the financial aspects of what the salary expectations are, the competitiveness, the shortage of or lack thereof of clinicians, along with the flexibility and helping it kind of be a good job life fit. In addition to, we recognize that right now we are starting to create the culture of this crisis center and we want it to be a culture that people feel like they are getting the care that they want and they're able to deliver the care in that quality manner.
Thank you all. That was that was a wonderful response to to that question. And I'm so glad you were thinking about not just filling the positions, but recruiting for that cultural shift, the the kind of the spirit of the team that's going to be necessary to do the work now and into the crisis center. So I'm a little boggled by the logistics of it all. I'm so glad you are figuring out those steps. But you like just the back-of-house stuff, who the who who receives the check from the county, who's who, how how this is all managed in terms of, you know, the fiscal part of it. But I think we'll probably hear more about that in budget. You answered a lot of my questions on the budget. Kind of toward the end of the presentation. I appreciate that. My only other thing is just to say thank you. I think it's brilliant to create the team before the crisis center doors open so that when they do open, you know, we don't miss a beat, that we're really ready and folks are served both before and after the crisis center opening. So I I appreciate that forward-thinking work that you're doing. It's really tremendous.
I don't have any questions. I just also want to say thank you for the the amazing work that you're doing. And I mean, it's just so exciting to see all this coming together and and talking about now bringing people on and working towards that that day we open the door. So thank you.
I just add, I'm really excited about some of the things you shared today. Increasing access is just such a huge, it could have such a huge impact. And and we've heard so much about the impact of our peers, our peer mentor programs and and what that means and and how that helps people access service and mobile response. All of those things, I think, are going to address an equity issue that we see in our Douglas County Health Equity Report. You know, we're bringing it to people instead of asking them to come to us. And I I I appreciate the thoughtfulness. I appreciate the way you're using what you've learned so far that you're not saying, this has to be the way and we've got to make it work. We were constantly asking, and I guess that's not really surprising for people who are in a a health science field, you know, of how can we do this better? How can we learn from from the data that we're collecting? So very excited about that. I just have one little question. We've heard a lot in the news recently about the ED department at LMH. And, you know, this is a big partner in this process. And does anybody have any feedback they want to give us on that? I think last week we heard about the organization and and how LMH is a partner in that. And so changes could, this is how partners and changes with partners can impact something, can impact the whole system. And I just wonder if anybody had any thoughts on that they'd want to share.
Commissioner Kelly, this is Jeanette Kirkpatrick with LMH. And I I would say that, you know, we are very hopeful regarding our ongoing negotiations with the emergency department. And we are still committed to the our core principles of quality of care and working with our community partners, remaining strong and independent. And we we anticipate some challenges and resolution of those. But I see us continuing to work very collaboratively with our partners. And we have heard the feedback from the community and we're continuing to move forward.
Thanks. I also think, and I also think I would, I would also just add to that, you know, just even over the last two years of working with, you know, our partners at Radac and Burton Ash and DECA and everywhere too. You know, when we do kind of come into come into some of the discussions and we're having a struggle with a answer or something, everyone is really committed to bringing that back to that person-centered perspective and really understanding that we're all we're all here to work towards what this patient needs. And resetting that oftentimes helps me let go of some things that like maybe I'm holding on to as well, right? Like, I'm just as guilty of it as any other human being is. And so, you know, I think we've we've had some really good experience over the last two years in doing that. And I think, you know, as long as we're sticking with that person-centered perspective and and we're openly communicating with each other like we have been, you know, we'll 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 find those road bumps along the way and we'll 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 overcome them.
Yeah, we can't, we can't manage our partners, but I but I think their choices sometimes are are going to impact this. So Jeanette, I appreciate that answer. And and Ricky, I wasn't really trying to toss gasoline on a fire or anything like that. I just thought we should explore that topic just a little bit since it's come up recently. Any other questions or comments, commissioners? Now, seeing none, on behalf of our commission, we want to thank you all for the tremendous work. If the depth of this report is any reflection, you are doing just great things. So we thank you so much. We thank you for the partnership and the and the collaborative work and Bob for your work bringing them all together. It's it's really impressive. So thank you so much for that. We're going to take a break. We will be back at five-thirty for our regular business meeting.
Thanks so much.